Later has been recognized as a 2018 Green Difference Award by Project Green Schools, which is a national nod for project organization that within our nation has 6,100 schools as members. And actually, our district is a district member. So as I say in the background notes, Project Green Schools has a mission of developing the next generation of environmental leaders through education, project-based learning, and community service. Jay is being recognized in the category of Outstanding School-led Project in Energy category for the work that he's done over the last couple of years with regard to our solar projects, specifically the carports and the two ground arrays that we have in Dayton. And then the work that he did last year in converting every single fixture in this building to LED fixtures. So as, you know, we reported out at the time, that is saving the district upwards of about $100,000 per year between those two projects. So, you know, as I say, I think he's done this work very much quietly and behind the scenes and really isn't looking for accolades in the least bit, but I think he's really, really well deserving of these. So I will be joining Jay this Friday at 10:00 at the State House, and they have a ceremony for the other winners, so I just want to say kudos and congratulations, Jay. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
Great job, yeah.
The second piece is another piece of very good and interesting news, and Chris Schmidt, our athletic director here at NIPMUC, and John Clements are actively investigating, putting in place a NIPMUC Hall of Fame, an Athletic Hall of Fame, based upon a lot of parent alumni feedback and the work of our boosters club. So they formed a Hall of Fame Formation Committee, and they met for the first time last week. I put in the background notes the folks that are on it, our former longtime athletic director, Jimmy Grant, who has a lot of great institutional knowledge, Paula Johnson, who is an alum, our softball coach, Bernie Curtis, our baseball coach, Steve Delarouvert, PE teacher, Pat Allen, and Arthur Hall, who's a community member but also has some good background as a founding member of the NADA Hall of Fame. So they're in the process of reviewing bylaws of other districts Athletic Hall of Fame, and they're looking at a 12-month process to create things like bylaws, establish a vision for the Hall of Fame, create some membership guidelines and so on. So their goal, based upon this work, is to create the first induction class in the fall of 2019, so it'll be a year from this coming fall. So as that work progresses, we will keep you posted.
Okay.
And then last but not least, you have attached in your report the most current year-to-date expenditure report for FY 2018, and then I think Jay also put in place a notation of accounts that are still under budget now that I think we can safely say we're out of the snow and ice season, and then some lines that are running over. So do you want to touch upon any of those, Jay?
Sure. I put a report in, you know, the year-to-date is the year-to-date, it has the same information it always has, it's got a lot of information there. I did highlight a few accounts. We've got a couple that right now are, we've got savings in, one is, as Joe, I'm glad Joe said it and not me, is snow and ice. We've got a decent amount of money still left there, and we've got some money left in what we typically would appropriate to school choice, based on where our salaries are sitting right now. We use teachers' classroom salaries that we allocate to the choice account. So between the two of them, we've got about $170,000 of additional money. We also have at least right now $130,000 worth of accounts that are over budget. So one is going to take away the other because we're still got three months to go. We've had a lot of building maintenance issues at all of the buildings, but mostly Misco and Clough. We continue to be challenged at Clough School with gas usage for reasons that we have yet to identify. Our gas usage at Clough is about 50% more than it is at Memorial, and it shouldn't be, and it never was until the last two or three years. So we're investigating that, we've actually got somebody coming back out tomorrow to try and see if they can do some work with the computer system there. I'm almost at a point where I want to take the computer system out and go back to the old way, because it works better. We've got some other sped issues that have kind of hit us as far as transportation. Our sublines are trending very high this year, which I'm not exactly sure why. Some of that has to do with maternities, the replacements get charged, the subaccounts. So hopefully those will kind of work its way out. And then the last thing that I'm concerned about is our deductible for the health insurance. As you know, we pay the deductible for our employees. I got a report at the end of December that said we had spent about $200,000 on that deductible. I just got another bill the other day, and we're up to like 360 now, three months later, and there's no way we could have had $160,000 in deductible costs in three months after $200,000 in six months. So I'm trying to find out some more about that and get a report from our health advisors, health insurance advisors, to see where that's trending, because not only is it concerning for this year, but it means that we need to fund it better next year if we're going to trend that high. Our liability on that's about $660,000. We tend to usually spend about 60% of that, historically that's what we've done, which would put us in line with what we're budgeting, but if we're going to trend higher than that, then we're going to need to address that. So that's a couple of things that I'm concerned about. In general, for this year, though, I think we're in good shape.
So given that we're only in April, is this the throughout calendar year?
No, this is as of Friday when I put this together, so.
It's for the fiscal year.
Right, it's for the fiscal year for starters, but we still have three months to go. So things are encumbered, so we know that. You know, there's still a lot of variables. You know, like I said, we've got $170,000 that right now looks really good, but I'm guessing that this $130,000 is going to at least get to that $170 and possibly more before we get done with the year. So we typically try to finish with a fair amount of money left if at all possible, I don't think that's happening this year.
When you meet with the health advisors, are they usually pretty accurate as far as helping us identify why it's so much more?
Well, I'm going to get a report that will basically list exactly what we've spent on deductibles for the year. So the question then is, does this report that he gives gets to me, say as of maybe the end of March, does it match where we've been billed at, or are we being not billed properly? I'm concerned that the bills, you know, the bills don't itemize, you know, this person, this amount, they just say, this is your deductible for the month. I need to get more detail on it at this point so that I know what we're really trending at. You know, they don't give me like names of diseases and stuff, they give me, you know, these individuals have hit this amount. I mean, it's not like they, you know, tell me that, you know, that Dennis here had a twist in his arm.
Well, no, I wasn't thinking that, but I was just wondering if they gave you, we have more, you know, catastrophic, you know, larger, larger issues that we're dealing with?
No, we don't, and that's just it. Our insurance claims are actually down, that's one of the reasons we got a 0% increase in our rate.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking.
Because our claims are down. But the deductible comes out of anything, I mean, any initial expense is deductible up to a certain amount. So it's not necessarily catastrophic claims, but, you know, we tend to say, okay, here's our liability, we know we trend at about 60, 65%, I always budget 75% to give us room, but if it turns out that we're going to be at 85 or 90%, that becomes a problem.
That's it. And that's what I have.
Okay. Administrator comments?
I'm just asking you to please table that item.
Do we need a motion to table?
No.
Okay, then we'll table that for our future agenda. Subcommittee updates.
Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, I'd be happy to give an update. So we had a meeting on Thursday to cover the mid-cycle review, and just to refresh everybody's memory about, about the superintendent's evaluation, we go through a number of areas. They're categorized into student learning goals and professional practice goals, and then they get into the district improvement goals. So within that, again, to refresh everybody's memory, we had the homework project, which I believe Dr. Rosecheck will go over shortly in the meeting. So that's making very good progress. And also the, the ability to define some metrics for our student success, which is really important to us, a brand-new type of objective that we put in, I think that's making some good progress as well. And then as we get into the modern learning objectives, there's, there's just a tremendous amount of things that, that were put into this plan, and I would say we're, we're very well on track getting, getting a lot done. There's, there's, there's still a few things related to social-emotional learning practices that are in progress, and they might not have made as much progress as we wanted to, but all in all, it's been a very, very good six months of progress. I think it's almost eight months at this point, but it's been very good progress so far. So we're looking forward to the end of the year, including a lot of these things, but we're, we're well on track to achieving a really ambitious schedule. So very well, very well done to Joe and the staff, I think.
The policy subcommittee met tonight to review J L C D administering medication to students policy. We did a careful look at the policy, looking at very broad and specific information as far as the storage and handling of medication, who can administer it, and we also looked at the procedures and rules for self-administration of medication. So this policy will come before the school committee for our first read on April 30th, and we'll go from there and be able to answer any questions that arise after the first reading of the policy. Is there any old business? For tonight?
We have no old business.
We have new business.
Homework committee. Some work has been done throughout the school year, particularly at the elementary level, at Clough and Memorial with regard to their school councils, and starting to delve deeper in looking at homework practices and what's happening, what are perceptions of all stakeholders, of teachers, of students, of parents. And that's just a start. So what's been done within the last month is Maureen has put together a committee involving all stakeholders, as we have in our district action plans, to kind of take a look at it, look at different metrics to assess consistency and fairness of practices, and then to develop a list of guidelines, and really a vision for homework within the district. So I've asked Maureen to discuss a little bit of the work of the committee and what the plans are and what the timeline is for the work. So Maureen?
Thank you. I'll come up here. So we just had our first meeting last, I think it was last week, and we, I reached out through the curriculum update, through school councils, kind of kept throwing it out, and I was really pleased that we have enough representatives across the whole district. So we have, you know, ranging from first grade teachers to high school teachers, we have specialized teachers, specialists, and administrators, parents, and students, and students are the best, because they really know homework more than anybody else. We may think we do, you know, but we're observing it, or giving it, or we remember experiences. So they actually brought a lot of wealth of information to the table at our first meeting. And so we, we kind of have a shortened timeline. Honestly, the conversations in our first meeting were so rich and deep that it's possible we may need to go past, you know, the meeting and schedule that I had set up, but we have two meetings in April, two meetings in May, and our goal was to, you know, maybe be moving forward with some general, like, beliefs about homework by that point. So when we come back, we'll see if we're, if we're at that point by that, you know, June 1st deadline. Basically, when we met, we just talked about what the purpose of the homework committee was, we talked about how we wanted to assess our current homework practices and just take a look at it and kind of shine a spotlight, you know, flashlight or so, and say, okay, what's really happening, happening across the district? So one of the first tasks that we did, we did a SLICE protocol, where within the week we just grabbed a bunch of homework samples, either when we're in walkthroughs, or we ask people to send them, or people in the committee brought them, and we're going to keep adding to that. And I had them go through and look at, through a different lens, and I let them, for this one, just choose what one type of lens they wanted to look at. So maybe it was if it was differentiated, or, you know, where, you know, how did it look visually, or where their problem solving was their agency, and they got, there was a long list they could choose from, and they took a look at that. And I'm also purposely in the groups, we're mixing the groups, so we have a parent representative, you know, secondary, elementary, and students as well, so all voices are in these smaller groups. We also want, we all come to homework with our own experiences, because we've all done it, or given it, or we, as parents, view it. And so I gave just a little scenario, just to model it, that I've gone through quite a journey from when I was a student and really liked homework. I was like, oh, that homework, that's great, you know, and I think a lot of teachers probably, many liked homework as well, and liked school. But I went through my transformation of being an AP teacher, and how much homework I gave as an AP teacher, to then being an administrator and a teacher, and kind of, you know, looking at research, and then the parent role. When I have two different parents, that changed everything. So I just gave a brief overview of like, okay, so I've gone through a journey. So what we started with in the last meeting, which they, they said they really liked looking at it that way, is their journey, what was it like for them as students, what do they see right now as current practice, what have they seen changing, and we just focus on what do they want to learn more about. And so our next meeting that will be coming up, we're looking at all the research, so we're going to be using the book study, Rethinking Homework, which a lot of districts are using, and we also have a series of different articles that I've collaborated with a few other districts that have either gone through the process or are starting the process now. So we've shared resources, and so we're going to be jigsawing out and looking at research related to it at our next meeting, and doing a protocol around that. And then we're going to start in our initial thoughts and beliefs about what homework should be or shouldn't be, and then we're going to dive deeper and go back to look at more practices, and also reach out on some surveys and get more input from other people as well, once we have more of our grounding ourselves. So I think it was a great start, it was a really productive, positive meeting that we just had, looking forward to it. It's a challenging topic, because, you know, there's, there's a lot out there, and I had everyone read that chapter one of that book, I would recommend. It's really interesting, because it goes through the history of homework all the way from the beginning, and how we have vacillated over the years, based off of national initiatives or, you know, Sputnik or whatever, it's a time period we're in, to either we need more, we need less, and we sway, and then we see the effects, and then some major research that's, you know, mixed in there. So I think we're off to a good start with it. And one piece, too, all the work that's been done at all the buildings prior, we will be looking at that data and information, too. So for example, at the high school, I think I've mentioned this, when they've done the food-for-thought luncheons, and there's clear themes from students that they've shared at the high school. We've had SWOT analysis that we're going to do as a committee, but we're going to look at what's been done in other, the schools already, to have some feedback. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Complex topic. Is it possible to get, so is the next time we're going to touch base on this June, for the beginning of June? Is it possible to get more updates than that?
Can I always give an update? I mean, our next meeting is right after break, so that'll be our first two meetings, and then in May, we have two meetings, so maybe, I would say maybe sometime in May, we could do that, and just let you know.
Is that okay?
Yeah. And I'll have a better sense, too, of, we're going to look at other guidelines and beliefs that other districts have come up with, once we start to establish ours, and then, you know, see if there's language we like or thoughts we like, but I, I think I'll have a good sense of where we're at by May, too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next one, the agenda, are the capital needs?
Okay, you have in your packet a updated delineation of the district's capital project list, which was recently updated by Jay and Ken Chouagnier, our Director of Buildings and Grounds. Jay, you want to speak to this, and the rationale, and next steps, and all that good stuff?
Sure. So this is a list that I think you all saw, maybe two, three years ago, we started sort of just compiling a list of all the things that need to get done in the district, because you can see it's fairly extensive, you know, to the tune of about, put together what we've already accomplished and what needs to get done, you're probably talking about $6.6 million, so we're not talking, you know, peanuts here. We have completed a lot of things over the last seven years or so, basically by at the end of the year, you know, investing $10,000 here or $20,000 here, we've tried to attack some of the big things, not, I shouldn't say big, some of the smaller cost things, but things that had to get done, things that just, you know, were dangerous, or just stuff that needed to get upgraded for one reason or another. So we've accomplished quite a bit, but the list of stuff still to be done is still 5.5 million, and there's a list here with all of these things. I think the point of this list is I believe that we're probably at a time where the school committee needs to have some kind of a subcommittee that looks at capital planning. There's a lot to get done, and there's not a great revenue stream to support much of this. I think at some point we may have to be looking at some kind of capital bond to take care of some things. But we're really not at that point yet. Before we do that, we really need to come up with a plan of how we can attack the little things at the end of the year, and what we want to do about some of the big-ticket ones. We've already applied for money from MSBA to potentially fix the flat section of the roof here, which is about, you know, the building's 20 years old, but the roof has been leaking for 10, over like the bandroom, the administrable offices, all that area there, we've been having problems, and we really need to replace that. The challenge there is all the HVAC equipment is also on that flat section, that has to get taken out in order to do the roof. So we've applied for funding for that, and hopefully we can somehow, you know, attack that one relatively quick. We have some other things that are priorities, I think I highlighted for you. The rubber playground surfaces at Memorial School by the kindergarten rooms really need to be replaced. We got the one done at Clough through the CPC funding from the town of Mendon. The town of Upton is willing to do something similar, but not quite as much money, or they're not sure how much money they want to invest, but they're looking for us to invest a fairly substantial amount, which we've been unable to do, but we do need to address that. But if you just walk around the buildings, especially Misco and NIPMUC, just look at the carpets in the classrooms. I'm sure all the teachers that are here today will tell you how great the carpets are in their classrooms. It's 20 years old, and carpeting usually doesn't last 20 years when kids are running all over them and chairs are being dragged on, and I mean, they need to be replaced, but it would be very expensive. I mean, just, anybody that's been in the auditorium recently, just look at the floor as you walk in the auditorium, and you'll see what kind of shape that's in. That room alone is probably $50,000. Every classroom we do is approximately $3,000. So it's an investment that we need to look at at some point. We've got, you know, I mean, I listed them all here, I don't need to go through them all, you guys can read through the list yourself, but, you know, outside here, we have a cement staircase going out of the parking lot down to where the locker rooms are, the stairs are crumbling away. We either need to take the stairs out or fix the stairs, otherwise somebody's going to get hurt on them. So those are the kind of things we'd like to try to do at the end of the year if we have money. The wells on the athletic fields are in terrible shape, but we also have HVAC unit issues and air conditioning issues and Freon, which apparently the government has changed the kind of Freon you can use, starting in 2020, so all of our units have to either be replaced or upgraded in some fashion, or they're not going to work anymore. We've got windows that need caulking, you know, again, talk to some of the teachers I see here that are in the eighth grade wing about how bees don't all come in their windows in the spring. The athletic locker rooms here, security systems, they make them go on and on. So I guess my point is, I think we need to, maybe after the elections, when you reorganize again, establish a capital planning committee to start to meet, and look at some of these needs, and see if we can develop a financial plan and a capital plan to address them over the next five to 10 years. Because it's not going to be a short-term fix, it's going to be a long-term fix, but we do need to address it. Questions?
There's a lot to consider.
Yeah. I would love to tell you that we could just build a new Misco Hill, and that would solve half of our problems, but I know, as an example, Dave Quinney, who's on the Alborl School Committee, they just approved a new high school. So based on the cost of that, and I look at this building here, which was built 20 years ago, and I believe cost around $21 million, I would tell you that today to build this school exactly as it is, would probably be $180, $200 million. That's a big ticket item. To replace Misco, you're probably talking similar types of money. So this is 6.5 million, and that's $180 million. I think it's kind of obvious which way we're going to have to go.
6.5 million's a bargain.
Yeah. I think the renovation on, you know, Misco, the bathrooms in Misco, the boys' bathrooms, they built that building for a K through 6 population, because that was the plan before our enrollment took off. We have eighth graders there that are taller than Joe and myself, and we've got urinals in the boys' rooms that are two inches from the floor practically. It's a problem. It just goes on and on and on.
So I think your, your recommendation is well informed, that during that main meeting, when the school committee does its reorganization, a new subcommittee be formed, and the subcommittee be a capital planning subcommittee. And I would also strongly urge that we do everything in our power to revitalize the multi-board.
Yeah, I think that would be key.
Because obviously, you know, both our towns and the boards are critical to this.
It's going to take a lot of collaboration to address the amount of money that we're looking at here.
I mean, is this, is this something that's above and beyond the budgets that we've already established?
I think, I think what you're looking at for a good chunk of this, take for example, something that'll probably be needed in the next two to three years, that being a brand-new roof for here at NIPMUC, that's something that would go to a debt exclusion bond. You know, my feeling is that if you're going to go for a debt exclusion bond, maybe what you do is you combine it with some of the larger capital needs that are listed here, and you package it. Okay? And then I, then I also think this subcommittee could also look at, work with our staff to look at, you know, other programmatic needs within our four schools. You know, something that comes to mind without giving it a great deal of thought is, it's kind of strange that Misco Hill used to be our high school, but in the process of converting it, we took out science labs. I think a real, real critical need at the middle school to give the kids the science that they really need is put in lab space there. If we were to go forward with a debt exclusion, that's something that I think would be a critical need.
I mean, to piggyback on that, in my train of thought, what I'm thinking is that, you know, first of all, the first step to any of this, we're going to start to address at the town meetings by establishing a capital fund, so that we have a place to actually put money, and then maybe we try to put a little bit of money aside on an annual basis to fund some of the little things. But I would agree with Joe that at some point, if we have a master plan of, these are all the things we need to do to upgrade the facilities in this building, including things like science labs, anything like that, we put that together as a capital bond for the school district to address all of them, and then maybe you do them over a three- or four-year period, but you've got approval from the towns to go out and get money to do that kind of stuff.
See, I got a note to myself here that says we've got to connect the dots between the strategic planning committee and all the stuff that's going on, right?
Yeah, and I know that in the planning, we haven't really talked And I know that in the planning, we haven't really talked much about the facilities other than little pieces, but there is a relationship between, you know, the strategic plan and a capital plan, and any good business should have a capital plan. And we have this, which, you know, is a great start because we at least have a list of all these things, but we don't have a financial plan to support all of this yet.
Do you have anything that would outline, for lack of a better term, when's the date at which each one of these things becomes critical?
It's kind of in here, but, you know, some of the stuff is a little, you know, a little less urgent than others. The roofs are going to be an issue. The carpeting's going to come to a point where, in classrooms, once the carpet starts to rip and people start to trip on it, you need to address it, otherwise you're going to have workers' comp claims that'll far exceed the cost of carpeting the rooms. So those kind of things are going to happen. A lot of this stuff is just, some of it is upgrading to the facility, but, you know, as an example, the wells here for the athletic fields. If we don't do the wells, the fields are just going to be what they're going to be. But it's something we should address at some point. The wells are like 12 feet deep, and they really should be 100 feet deep.
But I mean, in the meantime, before we've got a subcommittee established, it might be a good idea to go through what things are emergency and when that emergency's going to occur, so we can get some sort of prioritization set up.
Well, I think I would suggest that you get the committee together, and at some point, you meet with each building principal to go over what we've itemized on their list, because there could be things here that Ken and I haven't thought of, but, you know, John Clements could say, "You know what? This is another issue, and I don't see it on here," so they could bring it, and then get help prioritizing what has to come first, you know, and what's the big-ticket things, when thing's going to run out. You know, when John's roof is leaking into his office, he's going to tell you the roof is the biggest problem, but when it's not, it might be the carpets in the auditorium or the carpets in classrooms. You know, we don't even have on this list, science labs, but I know that the infrastructure for science labs is in the building, because they had them there, they took them out. So I think the gas lines are there, and I think there's water lines and stuff, but for all I know, they're filled with concrete at this point. I mean, I have no idea what they did when they renovated the building. We have plans, and we certainly can find out, but, you know, at some point, through the big stuff, we need an architect to come in and engineers to come in, and all of that takes money. So again, the first step is to just create a plan and, you know, get it analyzed and understand where we want to go.
Understood.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure. If we're positive, sit up all night.
Well, we started out very positive with your reports.
Yeah, we're saving money on electricity, but not enough to pay for all of this.
Correspondence?
Here, I'll give you a hard copy. I apologize, I didn't get this scanned in time, so it wasn't in the packet. We do have correspondence from both Representative Meridian and Representative Murray. First, on the issue of the restoration of 75% reimbursement for circuit breaker, which is the funding for out-of-district special education placements. Just acknowledging that we corresponded with them, asking for their assistance in the supplemental budget process. If you recall, with mid-cycle cuts, the reimbursement rate was projected to be 68% rather than the mandated 75%. In the interim since this correspondence, Alice Peisch has put in an amendment to the House Ways and Means Committee to add $12.5 million to the circuit breaker funding, which would increase the reimbursement rate not quite to the 75%, but up to 72%, which is definitely a step in the right direction. And then today, we also received correspondence, again, from Representative Murray, who acknowledged the letter that you signed off on and voted on at the last meeting, where he states that he's very supportive of all the requests in the House Ways and Means Budget, specifically raising the minimum per pupil increase in FY19 to $100 per pupil, reimbursement of circuit breaker at the 75%, and then also the 100% reimbursement of regional transportation. So good to get that acknowledgement at least from Representative Murray.
Thank you. Other matters anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the scheduled meeting? Future agenda items, the presentation from the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey data on April 30th, and we will also have the first read of the policy for self-administering medication on the 30th. Anything else?
Did that meeting get changed? I thought it was the 23rd. The date was on the last of June.
Yeah, it's three weeks from now.
Thank you. Is there anything else for tonight? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. All in favor?
Bye.
The meeting is adjourned at 7:37?